Good evening and welcome to the December 5th, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll start off with the signing of the warrant.
I'll move.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Approval of the November 7th meeting minutes?
I'll move.
Seconded.
I was absent that meeting, so that's two in favor, one abstention. Now, approval of the November 21st meeting minutes?
I'll move.
I'll second. That's two in favor, one abstention because Will wasn't present. Okay, with those out of the way, next we have invitation to speak. Is there someone in the meeting that would like to approach the board who's not on the agenda?
I'll speak.
Mr. Wheelock?
Hi there, Mr. Wheelock. Jamie Wheelock, it was nice to go to the renovated Armory Youth Center on Sunday afternoon, and I was surprised to see that the 100-year-old plaque that was in the front hall has not been reinstalled for another 100 years of explaining some of the history of the building. Hopefully, it will be reinstalled in the prominent location that it used to occupy.
It'll be reinstalled, we don't know the location yet.
Hopefully, it will be front and center like it has been for 100 years, and it's an amazing plaque that deserves to be prominently located. It made me wonder about if the town of Milford already has guidelines for recognitions and commemorative plaques. There seems to be a trend of oversized markers for the scale of generosity. The town can both be grateful for the generous acts of donors and recognize the gifts with appropriately modest plaques. When you recognize that the Milford taxpayers funded the overwhelming majority of the $5-plus million renovation, it is hard to see how the current pavers in the thank-you pavers on the front path and the interior recognitions related to the lions and the rotary, how they are featured as prominently as they are. Huge. The one that recognizes the AED heart device, it's not even near the AED device, it just looks like they're presenting it for the whole building or something. It's strange. And then, of course, there's on West Fountain Street, the high school, there's the changing signage thing that promotes different activities, that's some Eagle Scout project or something, that has a, again, hugely oversized thank-you to the major sponsor for that project. And it sounds like the town of Milford could use more guidelines on the appropriate size of plaques and markers for gifts. Hopefully, we will be given lots of gifts in the future and be grateful for them. I just think it's important that the location of the plaques and the size of the plaques is carefully considered and standardized in a way that doesn't encourage recognition inflation. All right?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jamie.
All right, next we have public hearings and scheduled appointments. Our first item on the agenda is Milford Housing Authority Board of Selectmen, closing of a vacancy. We received a letter in October from Patricia Morrow, Executive Director, letting us know that the Milford Housing Authority wanted to fill a vacancy, the vacancy created by the untimely death of Samuel Bonzare. With that, we posted appropriately for this meeting and let the members know that we'll be meeting with them to fill that. Rick, do you have anything more? Is a requirement of law to do this?
Basically, we posted it out as required, and now it would be a roll call vote of the members from the Housing Authority and the Selectmen in attendance at this meeting.
Okay.
We also received two applications that went both to myself and, I believe, to the Housing Authority.
Okay, so with that, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Chairman of the Housing, if you could, for the benefit of the community, introduce the members you have here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ed Burdorelli, Chairman of the Milford Housing Authority. Our meeting was also posted on our own site as well. To my left is Mike DiOrio, and behind me is Laurie Brazza, Kathy Consigli, and our Executive Director, Pat Morrow. And I want to thank you for inviting us in. Chairman Buckley, Selectmen-elect Murray, and Will Kincaid.
All right, so with that, I'll take a roll call vote.
I think you need a motion first.
Well, it's true. We'll take a motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Is there a motion that a member would like to make? You know, that you had indicated in your letter that you had some...
I make a motion that we select Attorney Pat Holland as the member.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there... Why don't we go to the voting members of the board? Pat is not a voting member.
No, there's four of us here.
Four here. Okay, so, Mike, you made the motion, I'll ask the voters.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Brian?
I guess the question is why the Housing Authority feels the need to fill this position with only three months to the election?
Brian, we have a motion. We can ask that in a second. We have a motion, and I'm just, I'm trying to work my way, navigate my way through the...
Well, there would generally be discussion on the motion before the vote.
Okay.
So, I mean, I thought that's what we're doing, just having discussion before the vote. I mean, once you have the vote, then it's over. Generally, there's a motion, a second, discussion, and then a vote.
Okay.
So I thought we were in the discussion phase.
Okay.
No, that's a valid question.
You said a question.
That's a valid question.
You said a question why we're doing it, that's all.
We have been running at less than full capacity for at least, oh, three, four years now because of Sam's illness, various illnesses. Sam, up until the day he died, was a staunch supporter of the Housing Authority. He didn't want to let it go, and I think probably in the last year or two, he's probably attended 30% of the meetings, roughly. And we felt, we didn't want to pressure him, but we weren't running at full capacity, and we felt that at this point, we wanted to maintain the full capacity now that we could between now and April. I think, taking a page out of Brian's book, by not resigning and keeping the Board of Selectmen at full capacity, we felt we would be doing basically the same thing.
Okay.
But it looked as though, I mean, and I looked at your meeting minutes, Mike, and you've had 18 meetings going back over the last year and a half, and 10 of them occurred without Sam, but there were dozens and dozens of votes, and all were unanimous. So I don't know what the need would be, you know, where they're that close to the election just to allow the people to decide who to fill this unfettered. That's why I had that question.
I think the people, in the end, the people will decide. I mean, it's open, starting in January, it's open for anybody who wants to run for the position. So in April, the people will decide. Right now, we're saying we'd like to be at full strength between now and April.
But when you do that, then you would have an incumbent, so someone would have to run against an incumbent if the appointed individual is going to seek the election.
Not an elected incumbent. We would have an incumbent by appointment.
Yeah, yeah, he's still going to be incumbent. I don't know, it just seemed to me, I mean, the assessors is only three members, and they were down to two, and they were in the same situation because, as you know, Sam served as an assessor, and the assessors chose not to do it to allow the voters to decide. So I just wondered why it was different, particularly we had a four-member board.
I think every board is different. Every board thinks differently.
I think that would be the reason. That was our thinking. We saw what the assessors were doing, but we wanted to move in another direction. I think there's a precedent to that, so, and I think, as you say, there'll be an election in April. Anyway, even though the person is appointed, there'll be plenty of chances to run.
Okay.
Do you have four, I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman?
Five in favor?
I just want to add that because we are having a discussion that I think it's just important for this body just to take the recommendation of this committee standing as it is. So this is what the Housing Authority is looking to do, so I want to support that, just like the Board of Assessors did, I supported not moving on with an appointment, because that's what the Standing Committee, the remaining committee members want to do. So that's why I'm in support of this.
All right. So we have four, five members. Brian, your vote?
My vote is no.
Okay. We have sufficient votes to appoint Patrick Holland. With that, I'll vote in favor. And so that's a vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to bring up one issue that I had talked to you about. When they redid the town website several years ago, they eliminated the Housing Authority from the site, and I think it would be helpful if it were put back on, not necessarily as a town department, but as a town board or commission, because obviously, the vast majority of our residents who live in our Milford residence, we were very, you know, the board and especially Executive Director Morrow were very active in doing issues on the transportation, the bus transportation issue. And I think it's a resource that someone can access without trying to get a non-existent phone book or whatever, to be able to get in there and get, especially if they need help, and we do in some crisis situations. So if we could get that back on there.
Rick, any thoughts?
Yeah, if I may.
Please.
Two things. One, I agree with you. Two, we are going to be in the process of redoing our website so that organizations such as yours affiliated with the town will be able to have a webpage, and if we do it the way I think we're going to do it, maybe you'll be able to post minutes and agendas and things like that.
Excellent.
So, again, we will not forget you, please remind me, but I do agree, Mr. Chairman, if you may.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if there was some legal reason or something, I know we...
I'm not aware of any.
Me either. And links to other boards just makes sense, it gives somebody a single point of shopping. Okay. All right, thank you for bringing that up. We're happy to do that.
Good luck.
Good luck, yes. Next, we have license transfer.
Good evening.
How are you? Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you.
We have a license transfer for license of Milford Restaurant Holdings LLC, transfer of location. And with that, I'll introduce Attorney Anton Ellis, and let him begin.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the transferee. I also can say to you that I prepared the complete package with the assent of the transferors who are here, Mr. and Mrs. Wallach are here. I think they're known to the people in Milford, they've had an outstanding reputation, running the fine restaurant Truffles. The petition before you tonight is to seek to transfer their license from their present location to a new entity, Restaurant Holdings of Milford, for a future location on East Main Street in a portion of the Kmart Plaza. The proposal, obviously, is that there's an agreement between my client, the owner of the Plaza, and the subsidiary company, which will run the restaurant, to purchase the license from the Wallachs. And the intention is to open a small restaurant on the far-left side of the Kmart building in approximately 5,000 square feet. The owners of the Kmart Plaza have been in negotiations with a variety of different chains, all of whom would need a liquor license to come into Milford and operate a restaurant at the facility. None of those licenses have been secured, none of those leases have been secured, and of course, I advise my client that their only option would be to go in there and start a restaurant themselves and get the thing set up and hope that somebody will come in if they didn't want to stay in the restaurant business. So we formed the appropriate corporation to do that, obtained the tax identification number, have found a young man, Josh Abrams, who's not here tonight only because he has a final exam in his master's program in property management at NYU, so I apologize for the fact he's not here, to come up and run that part of the facility. There are a significant amount of things that are going to happen at that Plaza within the next few weeks. The ability to publicly disclose those things is limited because leases are sitting on people's desks awaiting signatures. However, I will tell you, I just confirmed with your building inspector, Mr. Erickson, that I have a meeting with him at 2:00 on Wednesday afternoon with he and the fire chief, because we are going to apply for a demolition permit for the interior of the Kmart building to immediately begin the renovations to that building, not only for the potential restaurant, but also for tenants who are coming into that building. I happen to know the Wallachs personally, and I heard through the grapevine that they were considering closing, and when I called Howard, he confirmed it, and I said, before anything happens, let's see if perhaps we could work something out so that you can use this license as an asset. We know that licenses are privileges, they're not things that are put out on the market to sell, but I've always learned that in Milford, you take care of other people in Milford when you can, and that's what been our attention and our hope that this board will find an appropriate applicant before you, albeit the fact that there's no one here from New York. I have now had over an 18-month relationship with this company. I have found that they responded to each and every one of my questions and have done what I've asked relative to doing work here in Milford.
And different communities' requests and questions and requests for help.
Yes.
They've been very supportive of...
They tried to be supportive, even though the distance, I've been able to get through them, and I've got the phone numbers to the right people. So again, there's not much to say, we're going to take 5,000 square feet, we may have to go back for a minor site plan because we've got to make sure at all times that we have the parking ready. I can tell you that I'll probably be back about the Bugaboo Creek situation because something's going to happen there also, but that's for a couple of weeks away, maybe. But I wanted to get this done for the Wallachs, and I'm here to answer questions, I don't mean to monopolize this conversation.
Attorney Anton Ellis, for the benefit of the community and the applicants and the board, I generally read the request for department head review prior to making a decision. So the building commissioner's opinion is that this is IC zone, allowable use with an occupant load of 110, and his restroom is handicapped accessible. Town planner indicates 2015 special permits, site plan approvals included a restaurant for nearly 4,000 square feet, tenant space D within the main plaza of building, see attached plan. Tax collector indicates there's no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer indicates no issues or liens. Fire department has no objections. Police chief has no objections or concerns, and there is a plan. With that being said, I'll go to the board members to see if they have any comments or questions. Brian, any comments or questions?
So Joe, you're still in a state of flux trying to develop this Plaza, and, because the plan indicates, you know, square footage under 4,000.
Correct.
And your application is 5,000, but, I mean, at this point, you're not even sure of what the complexion of the different units are going to be.
Right. We're not sure who's coming yet.
Can change.
Right. For instance, Chipotle is coming. That was in the paper, and the size of their facility is a little bit up in the air as to exactly what they're going to take. They don't serve liquor, so there's not a liquor license coming with that. And so we may be able to shift some retail. I think you know that I have a fairly good relationship with the planning department, so I made sure that I let them know that if I have to come back for a modification in count parking spaces, we're prepared to do that.
So this Restaurant Holdings is just an entity to hold a license so that the landowner, when they finally secure a suitable tenant, then you can do a transfer at that point?
Correct. But I've also advised him of this town's theory relative to that type of situation, what I think a classified is pocket licenses, and that's why I've told Josh Abrams, who's going to be the manager, that he needs to go take the TIF courses, and he needs to get himself trained in this because he may be running a restaurant, because if we don't find someone to come in, we will probably open it. Again, to preserve the license, I think that's an integral part of the overall development of the real estate there, is to have some real good food anchors.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're going to have this as well as what goes into the old Bugaboo?
That's correct.
Is Chipotle going into the Bugaboo?
No, they're going to go into the freestanding building that's shown there.
So you could potentially have three restaurants in this?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And again, Chipotle is not a user of, there's no alcohol at those.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Will, any questions?
No, thank you. No, actually, with the last exchange, most of my questions were answered as well. No, I don't have any further questions. Good luck. You guys run a great business, we love it there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have no questions either, so I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Seconded.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As always, thank you to your staff upstairs again. You know, Jean is very, very thorough with me about those licenses, so I think the applications are usually done okay. And she makes me better when I go to other towns too, so, thank you.
Joe, grab a whoopee pie when you're there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We enjoyed our time here very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'd be nice to see you.
Good luck with everything.
Enjoy. Good luck.
Nice job, Joe.
Take care.
Next, we have...
See you later.
Next, we have a recommendation from the finance director regarding the auditor. We have not signed up with a new auditor, and I know you and I had had an exchange, we had talked briefly about reasons why folks use the same auditor for a long period of time, or why they might change as well. And I know one of the things I wanted us to be cautious about is to ensure that our relationships with our auditors are at arm's length, and I just wanted to get your impression of that, and then your recommendation for where we ought to go with our auditing firm. I know the last time you recommended resigning a three-year, was it?
Correct.
With Scanlon Associates?
Correct.
Okay. Is that still your thoughts?
Yeah, I, can I get into it a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, please.
All right, so our last audit was fiscal '15, so we need 16 audited, and we're six months into, almost six months into '17, believe it or not, it's crazy, but, so we need to get 16 audited, so the window's kind of going there. So, right off the bat, I mean, we have it, this contract where if we honor it, they could come in in February, and we could have FY '16 taken care of. We have, we've had conversations, Scanlon has been, Scanlon Associates have been the auditors for, say, over 20 years now for the town, which is not necessarily a bad thing, and kind of biased opinion for me where I started my career off in the CPA firm and had done auditing myself, that's where I started my professional career. And one of the things I see is when you get a good auditor, you really want to keep them because there are some out there that aren't that good. Especially with municipalities, it's a little bit different because it's that industry-specific, so there's not a heck of a lot of auditors that do municipalities, Massachusetts, I'd say around five or six of them. Scanlon has done a great job, and one of the things that I think they do really well is preparing our audited financial statements, which is a lot more thorough than what comes out of my office as far as GASB standards and having to do your proper footnotes and disclosures. And if you remember, last year was the first year when the pension liability entered our balance sheet, and with that, it's taken two different systems, the retirement system on a calendar basis, and combining it onto the town's financials, and it's not easy, it's a difficult process, and it took a long time to get it right, but it's there, it's together. We just had OPEB put together, which is for other post-employment benefits, but that's a whole nother story, and that increased pretty significantly too. So that, this current year, GASB 67, 68 came in where there's also additional footnotes, disclosures that need to be assessed on your audited financial statements. One thing I think that's good with having a relationship for an extended amount of time with an auditor is that they have your history. In the audit world, a lot of testing is done through analyticals and variance testing, and that's what having the history and the data to measure against prior years and current years, I think, is very important. There's also that mode of thought that it could become stagnant, that you have someone for a long time, you want to bring in a new set of eyes. So if you recall, the last go-around, we had asked for a partner rotation, and in fact, since we did, we had three different partners over the last three years within the firm, so the last one being Jeff, if you recall. So we're here right now, we need an audit firm to take care of FY '16. Now, just because we have the three-year doesn't necessarily mean we need to do a three-year, we could do a one-year. My concern right now is just with timing, with getting someone in, as I said, we have to have this taken care of for the last fiscal year, and we're halfway through the current year. So I would recommend minimally that we do a one-year contract, or we can go ahead and do the three. As you can see, it has not increased in price, so it's a pretty good deal.
Zach, I'm inclined to support your request for three years, but at the same time, you know, I think, you know, normally these discussions in private sector might be had outside of a camera to talk about the extent to which our auditors are performing what they need, providing, and we're doing our fiduciary duty by making sure we have an arm's-length relationship. So I think it's a, I think it's a good test, it's a good question, and I think it'll, it may always be the case that it's easier to go with the same auditor because of the way they test variances and do that. But it's a question we should be asking, and we should be listening to that response. I have no problem supporting the Scanlon Associates, I think they do a good job as well. But it's a question that should be asked when you have an auditor, the same auditing firm for 20 years.
I agree.
Okay. So with that, I'll go to the members. Brian, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I support the auditing firm. I mean, I've worked with Scanlon Associates since the days that I was on the school committee, and, I mean, that's a long time, and, you know, there's certainly been ups and downs financially in the town through the various departments. I was always impressed the way, well, first Tom Senior, but I think Tom Senior's more or less retired now, and...
Yes.
But, you know...
Elvis failing too.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I worked with Tom Senior for a number of years, and now his son, I think, is very, very thorough. Essentially, the fee is the same as it's been since 2010, so you don't find that many places, and the institutional knowledge that they have, I think, is invaluable. If I didn't think that this auditing firm was doing a good job, there would be some other evidence of it. We would be having some financial deficiencies or problems somewhere along the line, and nothing could be further from the truth. So I feel very comfortable in the financial operations of the town as well as the oversight that this Scanlon Associates provided. So I fully support the three-year contract.
Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I support the three-year contract going forward as well. I've never experienced another auditor, as Brian said, between the school committee and here. I'm glad we had this conversation, I think it's healthy.
Yeah.
There's certainly different laws and regulations, at least at the state agencies where you're forced to change with X so many years and cycles, so I'm surprised municipalities aren't under that, but it's certainly not a criticism of Scanlon, I mean, they have a great reputation and have served us well, so.
Doug, glad we had the discussion, zero motion.
I'll move to approve the three-year extension for Scanlon and Associates pursuant to, what was it, the engagement letter dated, is that engagement letter was dated August 20, I'm sorry, it looks like April 11th?
April 11th.
April 11th, 2016.
Seconded.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Zach.
I got one more real quick thing, if I may?
Please.
Okay, so this is more in FYI, I don't know if anyone heard, but the deadline for filing W-2s is going to be January, the end of January this year. So I had asked our treasurer to write me a quick memo just to outline how we're going to handle it, and more or less the reason, so in doing some research, and I was actually surprised on what the reason was to move this deadline up, I thought that it would be just to make sure that employees can get it timely so they can get their refunds, but of course, the IRS isn't going to be trying to push money out like that, but the reason really is, has to do with cybersecurity. So over the past few years, there's been a lot of hackers, if you will, filing false W-2s, and if the company does not provide the backup for them to bounce it off and audit, if you will, then a lot of people are getting away with it. So this is an attempt to make sure that the data is given to the IRS timely and to make sure that, to prevent the cybersecurity. So it hasn't, it won't be an impact on us because we've always gotten it out prior to that, but there are some pretty hefty penalties if you don't. But our plan is by mid-January, we'll have the 941s tied out to the 940, we'll have the W-2s tied out to the W-3s, we'll have everyone, and we also do a lot of individual testing as well to make sure that everything looks good, and we will have it out and on time. good and we will have it out and on time.
All right. Thank you.
Quick, that way.
For updating us on that regulation and, uh, letting us know if there's anything that you need. You find, uh, to be compliant, let us know.
Absolutely.
Software, hardware, or otherwise.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Zach.
Good night.
Take care, Zach.
Next, we have town administrators report.
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things to report tonight. One, um, uh, we replaced the stair treads on the stairwell leading from the lower level to the first floor on Town Hall, as they were becoming unsafe and were in need of repair. And I just wanna thank, uh, the building commissioner, John Erickson, the facilities director, Carlos Benjamin, for overseeing this, uh, project. Um, I want to again remind people on the winter emergency parking ban, um, the police chief again will notify WMRC radio, AM fourteen ninety, Boston TV news stations, the Milford Daily News and the Town Crier. Notification will also be made via the Town of Milford Connect CTY notification system. When the ban is lifted, notification will be made in the same manner. And I would encourage anyone, uh, who wishes to be notified, um, to, uh, contact the police department and then we can, uh, notify them via the, via cellphone or text. Um, I wanna thank, on behalf of the park department and the town, David Sanchez. He's the owner of Busy Bee Landscaping and Construction, Inc. in Milford, for his generous donation and planting of a beautiful nine-foot blue spruce tree at Draper Memorial Park. Uh, David expressed that he was thrilled at the opportunity to donate the tree and be part of the tree lighting tradition. He's excited that his wife Shannon and their two-year-old daughter, Madeline, can watch the tree grow and hopefully Madeline, one day, can attend the ceremony with her own family. Um, I wanna update the board on the Archer Rubber demolition. Uh, a second meeting was held, this time with the owners of Archer Rubber Plant and the fire chief, deputy fire chief, and the building commissioner. They are close to finalizing the plan to demolish the building. They hope to begin, uh, pest control and asbestos abatement as soon as the plans and permits are finalized. The goal is now to demolish the building in one week's time, uh, once demolition, um, is commenced. We had a meeting of the, uh, regarding the regional substance navigation program. We had an informational meeting on Friday, uh, December second in room three. Representatives from the towns of Upton, Bellingham, as well as the Norfolk Sheriff's Office attended. In addition, the town administrator from Hopedale called and expressed interest in the program, but unfortunately, he could not attend. Police chief, Tom Olafland, finance director, Zach Taylor, Amy Leoni from Community Compact, and I provided information about the program itself and how any town's contribution to the program will be handled and how records will be maintained. Each of the town, uh, representatives will now provide the information to their boards of selectmen and will then contact me, um, and hopefully they will all participate and we can start to begin this program. And finally, uh, I learned today, uh, we received a very generous gift from Harold and Marsha Rhodes. They have made a gift to the town in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to be used to improve public awareness of our new bus transportation, uh, system. Uh, I wanna publicly thank them for this kind and generous donation and hopefully the board can, uh, vote tonight to accept, uh, that gift on behalf of the town. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and, uh, with that, I wanna take up a motion to accept that gift and just let the members know that that gift is intended to be utilized by the, uh, Transportation Advisory Committee to, to spread the word.
Yeah, glad to make that motion and, uh, Harold is still driving that bus. This is figuratively, not literally.
All right, so we have a motion?
I gladly second that.
Yeah, I'd, uh, vote to support it. That's unanimous and thank you very much.
Thank you, Harold. Thank you.
It's, uh, very helpful to the community.
Certainly is, Harold.
Uh, so now Scott and company have the opportunity to create some, uh, collateral leaflets and different things that can go to different people and work with the, uh, local churches, look, work with the local businesses to, uh, communicate this new, new, uh, bus transportation model. Okay. So, thank you, Rick. Uh, you have the vote that you needed on that.
Yes.
Was there any other action you needed relative to that?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And, um, hopefully, we're, we're gonna get something out to Busy Bee?
Yes, we will send it, yes.
Uh, yeah, what a great, what a great gift and, uh, something that, uh, the community will look at every year and, and think of them. All right, next, under old business, we have community use, uh, use committee. Uh, there's a opening and an appointment. We've got, uh, let's see, let me go through the people who, who have applied. Justin Dulac. We have Jeremy Kernan. We have Richard Lucchini. We have Christopher Wilson and James Dorval. All people have, have shown some interest in becoming members of this committee. We also have a letter from Mr. Morcone, Director of Community Use, uh, recommending, uh, that we fill the position with, uh, Mr. Kernan. So, what's the favor of the board? Is there a, a motion?
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not sure exactly how you wanna proceed on this, 'cause, 'cause I see this as kind of also involving the personnel board appointments, because, uh, two of the individuals who have listed, who, whose names are submitted with the community use package would also be eligible to, um, serve on the personnel board, uh, for those two openings. But, um, my understanding was that the recommendation from the personnel board was to extend invitations to folks, to allow them to come to meetings, to see if they wanted to, you know, participate. And I don't know if those invitations had gone to these two individuals, so...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm not real sure, um, if, if you, you wanna go forward on this or work through the personnel board to see whom they would be looking for if these other two individuals were allowed to participate. 'Cause you have two individuals who've indicated service on a number of boards, two of which should be community use and personnel.
I'm prepared to go forward with this, this appointment, um, and discuss, uh, personnel board separately. I have some different thoughts on that.
Okay.
So...
Oh, I'd make a motion to, uh, support the recommendation of the community school, uh, use director, uh, Lenny Morcone, for Jeremy Kernan.
Okay. Is there a second? Not hearing a second. Is there another motion?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Christopher Wilson to the community use board.
I'm sorry, Christopher Wilson?
Yes.
Did you say? Okay. Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, uh, I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Okay, so, we've talked about that appointment. Soon got the personnel board discussion. But next, we'll go to the twenty-seventeen ballot. And Rick, uh, why don't you go over this, 'cause I know you've had the dialogue and...
Sure. Briefly, um, I contacted election council, as did town clerk, Amy Nev, um, at the State House regarding the vacancies for, as you know, selectmen, housing authority, and Board of Assessors. Uh, they actually will be unexpired, uh, terms. We were informed by council that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section Ten, the board must vote to place each office on the ballot for the April fourth, two thousand seventeen, election, as each position is for, um, an unexpired term. This board vote must occur before the town clerk can make nomination papers available for each office. Um, so, um, what I would need is the board to vote to place each of those on the ballot for April fourth. And I think, uh, just further edification, as the board has already pointed out, with the Milford Housing Authority discussion, uh, that particular one, even though you made the appointment, the individual so appointed will serve until April fourth.
Right.
And then there'll be a general election for that, but you still must place that, um, on the ballot, as I'm told.
Okay, so, with that said, can I get a motion to place the, to contact Amy Nev, our town, uh, clerk, uh, indicating that the Board of Selectmen would like to place the Board of Selectmen's unexpired seat, Milford Housing Authority unexpired seat, and the Board of Assessors' unexpired seat on the, uh, April twenty-seventeen ballot?
I'll move.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
And then, and then, Rick, you'll, you'll take care of filing the notice?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a license renewal for, for Bugaboo Creek Steakhouse. Uh, Rick and I had a, a couple of discussions about this. Um, and if you look at this letter, had, this is something I hadn't seen before. It's a, a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of the State Controller, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, asking that, um... And I don't know why we've not seen this for all of them, Rick, but at least we've got this, uh, for Bugaboo Creek. And it asks that the, the license holder certify and swear under the penalties of perjury a few things, that they're authorized to sign under Mass. General Law one thirty-eight, that the license renewal is for the same class, type, and category, that the license has complied with all the laws of the Commonwealth related to taxes, and that the premises are now open for business, and if not, explained below. So, the question I had is, clearly, the business is not open for business. And there's no explanation, so I can't tell if somebody's certifying that it is open for business, when in fact, it's not. I just wanted to...
This is a pocket license now, Rick?
Uh, well, if, if I may, the only wrinkle here, I believe...
Feels like a pocket.
It's signed by the, what they call the Chief Restructuring Office. Um, I confirmed that the, uh, license holder, Capital BC Restaurants LLC, uh, I believe doing business as Bugaboo Creek, has filed a voluntary petition for, under Chapter Eleven. In speaking with town council, and, and maybe Brian can help me here too, um, I'm informed that the, uh, liquor license would be an asset under the control of the trustee and I'm further informed by town council that we would be precluded from not renewing the license. So, um, again, could, is it technically, I guess, a pocket license? Yeah. But that was my, that's my understanding here. As to the retail license renewal form, each license holder does sign these. We just, you know, if the board would like to see each of one of these in the future, I'm sure we can do that at license renewal time, so... Um, but that's, uh, basically what I learned, um, concerning, uh, this particular license. Um, I guess I can say now, I did have some discussions with attorney Antonellis, since he's informed us now, tonight, that apparently, uh, something sounds like it's in the works for the Bugaboo Creek, so they would be doing the same thing, uh, with a transfer of that license, which is an asset of that corporation.
So, it's town council's position, we can do nothing other than approve this license?
That's what I was so informed, yes.
Well, are, are, are we looking to approve it? I mean, what, what, this, this form is...
They want to renew their license, yes. Bugaboo wants to keep...
Oh, so it wasn't on the, it was not...
It was not on the list. There was a glitch, unfortunately. It didn't get to the proper places.
Okay, so this is the...
Normally, it would've been on the list when you renewed all of them.
Okay, so this is the renewal certification?
Correct.
This is being put together by the Chapter Eleven trustee? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, uh, I guess he calls himself the chief restru-, uh, Chief Restructuring Officer of the corporation, who's the one who signed the actual renewal application.
Okay, well, it'll certainly be an asset of the bankruptcy estate. That's unquestioned, so...
I did confirm they are in bankruptcy. I do have the actual filing.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Which was provided.
I'll move.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we have personnel board, uh, Talent Bank. Folks who have indicated an interest. Um, we have Ronald Platakius, Marsha McCurry, Vincent Kizo, Michael Visconti Junior, and Phyllis Ahern. I just had a discussion with Dennis Carroll on the, uh, on the board, as chairman of that board. And, you know, one of the things I explained to him is, um, my, my conflict and that specifically appointing more folks, uh, you know, I went back over prior discussions and meetings where different members of the personnel board had indicated, uh, their desire to essentially, using some of their words, go out of business and, uh, advocating that, uh, this, these, this type of activity go under the auspice of, uh, HR director. And that came from members of the personnel board. So, unlike capital improvement, where there was disagreement on whether the board could should continue or not continue, in this case, it was members of the personnel board saying, you know, hey, um, as a roughly ninety million dollar business, and those aren't my words, I'm just paraphrasing their words, uh, we should be looking at a personnel position. Uh, personnel position could very easily, uh, um, structure, uh, job descriptions and, uh, update them, could very easily go out and do salary compensation studies. That's what HR people do. Um, it could also be of benefit to, uh, department heads, um, when different personnel type of, uh, situations come about. Uh, there's a lot of things that personnel board, uh, personnel, uh, member of Personnel, uh, Department or HR Department could make sure that we're legal and in compliance with the state laws and federal laws with required, uh, training as it relates to things like sexual harassment, ethics, whatever. So, there's a lot of things that can be done in various departments. It wouldn't necessarily be exclusive to just, uh, the non-union positions. Could actually be a benefit and service to, uh, department heads in any, uh, scenario where things need to be documented, things needed to be maybe, uh, progressive discipline or corrective action, or, or some things needed to be done. Um, there's a whole host of things. I know we've talked about it at various times. One of the things that, uh, I'd like to go forward with Dennis and have a, have another meeting with Dennis before we appoint. Now, if you, if you two disagree and wanna make appointments, that's fine. Um, we're gonna take motions tonight, if you, if we wanna take motions. Um, but, I'd like to go forward and just feel out exactly where the personnel board sees themselves in four or five years. Um, he had indicated that there's nothing time-sensitive, no new positions, no new ads, no, no, uh, salary adjustments, no, uh, job title reviews or any of that, uh, that needed to be done in the next couple of weeks or next couple of months, for that matter. But where different members of that board had indicated a desire to go out of business, using their words, um, I think we ought to take that seriously and see, uh, what the future holds for personnel within the Town of Milford. Um, so I wanted to say that. And, and I wanted to say it before we add names to a board, and that my concern is this. It's the current board, um, that talked about in terms of going out of business and, uh, going to a personnel or HR type of position. And if we appoint new people, um, I don't know that that's fair to them. I think that this, this question, this concern, this issue ought to be, uh, talked of, talked about by our board first, before we start adding members to that board. Um, especially if one of the scenarios is potential, uh, removal of that board through town meeting action. I don't know if that's where the board is thinking, whether the board is thinking that, but, uh, I'll go out to the board members and get your thoughts. I know Jerry's, uh, weighed in as well, saying it would take town meeting action if that's what, if we wanted to follow the guidance of the personnel board's recommendation. So, uh, Brian, any thoughts?
Well, I, I don't know that that's the personnel board's recommendation. I mean, I, you know, don't have that information, but I think town council did an excellent memo...
They did.
...to really draw out the differences between what the personnel board does and how a human resources department would not be able to replicate what, what's being done at the personnel board. So, I, I really think it's an apples and oranges discussion and if you want to set up a human resources department, uh, there's still gonna be need for a personnel board. So, you know, I, I, I see them as mutually exclusive. I mean, my thought on this, and, and that's why I said it when we talked about the last appointment, was knowing that the personnel board had wanted to give interested applicants an opportunity to attend a meeting, you had two individuals here who've gotten applications in, who haven't had that opportunity, James DeVal and Christopher Wilson. So, I thought it would've made sense to accept the recommendation of the community use director on one individual who was interested and then on the other two individuals who have been... have indicated interest on the Personnel Board, give them the opportunity to participate in the Personnel Board and then come back for a later appointment. I, I guess at this point, what, what I would say is that I, I would ask the Personnel Board to reach out to Mr. Wilson and also Mr. DeVal and invite them to a meeting to, to see if that's in fact something that they're willing to participate in. The Human Resources Department is a totally separate discussion, and Jerry's memo, you know, itemized that, you know, part by part. And if, if, if the Board wants to go in that direction, I see that as a totally separate agenda item.
Well, nonetheless, it was brought up by the Personnel Board, not by this Board first.
I, I don't know that. I mean, I.
You were, you were present.
When they.
Yeah.
Was that during the study?
Yeah.
Was that during, they came out with that study?
Yeah.
Okay.
I went back and looked at those meetings and.
Well, I mean, I don't know that. Okay, so, I mean, maybe that, I guess that was part of the comments, but it was focused more on that study.
Okay.
But I, I see them as two separate items, I guess. I, I guess to the immediate answer to your question, I would advocate, you know, just kicking this back to the Personnel Board, giving them the names of the two individuals, asking them to, to attend a meeting, and then if you want to, if the Board does want to discuss the Human Resources Department, set it up as a separate agenda item.
Okay. Give your opinion, Will. Any thoughts?
No, I had the same concerns a, a few weeks ago, just comparing this with the Capital Improvement Committee. And then Jerry's memo did come back, and it covered, it covered a lot of information. I guess where, you know, I still have things to, to, to figure out and, and to learn the differences of how we can eliminate a committee like the Capital Improvement Committee, but the, you know, the Personnel Board is either, it's a different creature, and I think it's a different creature based on the responsibilities. And obviously, if we were going to replace them with an individual, then that would all have to be worked out and, and clarified, obviously, from the get-go, and that, I think that would be a good amount of work. I think, I just, my concern is I didn't.
It would be, yeah.
I don't want to leave vacancies on a Board if we're looking at six months' worth of work, a year's worth of work. If they're asking for membership, as long as they know what the thinking is of this Board, whenever that conversation comes up, if it does come up as an official agenda item, I just think that them knowing where we're at is important. If people accept appointments knowing that it could go away, if that's a possibility even in itself, then again, as long as we're letting people know what this Board is thinking, then at least I feel better about putting folks on a Board rather than leaving vacancies. I just want to make sure, too, because I think Brian brought up a good point with reaching out to James Dorval, Dorval and Christopher Wilson, but also, I'm not sure if Mr. Plataucus, I, I don't know that gentleman, but he's had a Talent Bank and application in at least this one since 2014.
I think he was invited to a meeting but did not attend. I would, I'll have to check that, but I believe, that's my recollection, recollection.
I would just include him in.
Absolutely.
Whoever else.
Yeah, if that, that's where the Board's going to go.
Okay, that's, that's good. Just because that's what's been hitting me when I, I know I constantly haunt you about the Talent Bank and things like that, but I'd like to see those dates because, again, some, some people in town, we have multiple people serving multiple positions on Boards, and there are people that are actually waiting to serve, and we should be encouraging that, so.
Okay. Yeah, in the meantime, I'll have a follow-up discussion with Jerry, because it would, I, I'm not opposed to making appointments, as long as the appointees know that we're reviewing recommendations from the Personnel Board themselves to eliminate that Board and to go to, as they said, a $90 million business with HR professionals onsite.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But I, I do think, you know, I was prepared to make motions or second them or however it was going to happen this evening as well.
Yeah.
But I think just having that conversation about reaching out to two new people, plus someone that's had a Talent Bank application in for a couple of years, kind of changed that. So, I, I'm, I'm no longer comfortable making motions, especially if we're not sure if some individuals in the Talent Bank are interested versus, you know.
I know.
So, I'd, I'd rather wait now, if that, you know, if you guys could oblige that, I think now, if we're going to send out invitations and let them, just to verify if they're interested, at least, we're not making any decisions that.
Okay. Well, we're not making, it doesn't sound like we're making, the only motion or recommendation that we have is to include, include more people who have shown an interest in becoming part of the Personnel Board, let them know they can attend a meeting.
Correct.
I think that's the decision.
Okay.
And what I'd like to do is give the Board members an opportunity, if they haven't already had an opportunity to review prior meetings with the Personnel Board where they had indicated desire to, I'm trying to get the right close-up shop or go out of business.
I think that was a frustration after dealing with that study, you know, I don't know.
No, that's fair.
No, you know, there were a lot of people that, you know, I noticed the, that had the movement in the, in the, in the audience by the members said, you know, and, you know, I got the, I got the distinct impression that doing studies every 10 years for salary compensation is, is not enough to keep anybody in business, right? Periodically, looking over job descriptions, right? It's like rebuilding an engine if you wait every 10 years, where the, the regular maintenance of somebody onsite could be doing that in a periodic and departmental way throughout the course of their regular job. There's nothing magical about that. The only, the only painful part of the process is if you wait 10 years. So, in any event, and then classifying new jobs that are put in could very easily be done. Now, what depends is how serious the Personnel Board is about moving forward and eliminating the Personnel Board, and how serious this Board is in taking that forward to Town Meeting, should that be something that, that we get aligned on. I don't know what the answer to that is, because we haven't heard all those answers. But we can have the discussion, and I can meet with Jerry about his memo as well. Okay. So, right now, we are making a request that folks get an opportunity to attend the Personnel Board if they're interested.
Yeah, and, and that was my memory also about the first individual that, that, because, because that came up the last time, Mr. Plata, he, he was given the opportunity, but, you know, include him again.
You should invite him again, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, next, under new business. I'm sorry, was there anything else under old business?
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have anything.
Okay. I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
Rick, I was wondering if we could get an update on the status of the ClearGov?
Yes.
From Zach or, or, obviously through you.
Yes.
Just where we are, what, what we, what we're thinking, if anything.
We are, we've had some discussion. We can do that, yes.
I know the school system is moving forward with it.
I believe they are.
And I just think that, you know, maybe we can benefit from something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Under new business, we have Town Administrator's Request for Heating Project Contract. Rick?
Yes. Basically, what, what's before you is a contract from E and E for the replacement of 14 existing ground floor mechanical heat pumps in Town Hall. Total contract cost is $80,800. E and E is a National Grid Approved Energy Project Expediter, basically under Chapter 25A, Section 14, the procurement law. If you have an energy conservation project, if the cost is less than $100,000, and it's a public sector project, all of which apply here, you don't have to go through the formal procurement bidding process. We have done this for projects here, the second floor heaters, the police boiler, something else, and also the heating units here, so.
And this money was appropriated at the October time?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, yes. So, I'll be looking to get permission to sign that contract and proceed accordingly.
So, I think the motion should be structured to have, if, if the Board is so inclined, sign a contract with E and E Systems for the amount of $80,800 to replace the heating pumps in the building?
I'll move to award the contract as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, I'll vote in favor. That's unanimous. All right. Do you need?
There'd be heat.
All right, and you'll sign that on behalf of the Board?
Yes, yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Next, you have replacement of sprinklers, the pipe of the attic of the Town Hall, and we have three bidders. We have Excel Fire Protection at $13,025. We have New England Fire System, $20,800. We have Cogswell Sprinker, Sprinkler Company, Inc. at $32,800. And you have a recommendation?
Yes, I have a recommendation. The bids were reviewed by myself and the Town Engineer. Just wanted to make sure with the wide discrepancy, we're getting what we're supposed to be getting, and both of us agree that that is the case. Mike has looked at it and has spoken with, with the bidder to make sure everybody understands the nature of the project. So, my recommendation would be to award to Excel Fire Protection, Inc. for the quoted price of $13,025.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Any new business by the members?
I, I don't have any.
I do, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask, we had a memo in our boxes from Jerry Moody to Chris Moran, the Finance Committee Chair, about Vernon Grove Cemetery employees and the Parks Department. Can we get something from the Cemetery Vernon Grove Board of Trustees letting us know where they are? Because it seems like they were copied on this, but I'm not sure that they were actually part of the conversation, and I might just be reading into that incorrectly. So, I would just like to know where they are before some decisions are made, either, quite honestly, by the FinCom or by this Board, if we don't know if they're supportive of this.
Okay. Yeah, the question becomes, whose decision is it to make?
Well, the employees are looking to become part of the union.
Right.
Right. And I think what Jerry's saying, once they become part of the union, you can utilize the workforce that way.
No, no, and I definitely agree with that. I just want to make sure that, you know, because they kind of talk about being under the direction of the Highway Department.
Oh, okay.
And that was the only thing that bothered me. I mean, I understand them wanting to go into collective bargaining and all that, but it just, again, they were copied on it, and I just want to make sure that they're, I was just, I guess, I was surprised that the letter wasn't written to the, to the Vernon Grove Trustees, copying all of us and the Finance Committee, rather than it going to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
So, if everyone's on board and it's not an issue, then that's great, but it's an interesting letter.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last piece, we have correspondence from Town Council, Jerry Moody, regarding the most recent vote to legalize recreational marijuana, and he's given some guidance, talking about the Board would have to make some decisions on or about, or prior to October 2018, when first applications can be submitted. And among the things available are the ability to either limit or prohibit sales, limit the number of retail establishments within a, within a window, based on liquor license, number of liquor licenses. But, you know, I think this is enough discussion that we should probably have Jerry in after the first of the year and go ahead and have him go through the bullets and what the options are, what we should be considering, then we can lay out a plan. All right, we don't have any executive session for this evening, so all I'll ask for is motion to adjourn.
So, move? Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see if there's any correspondence. Yeah, I'll move to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn is seconded. That's unanimous. Thank you and good evening.